Good morning, Councilors. I'm sure you can hear me. Good morning, Councilors. This is Oliver Ojaka, Community Planner. And this morning, we have Jenna from my staff, and we also have Brent from Community Development, and we have staff from Department of Ecology listening in. I would like to sincerely thank Brent, who assisted us with this project, and Jenna for taking it through until now, and Ecology for the grant that they provided us and the technical assistance that they have been providing us up till now. I'm happy to report that Ecology has provided us their initial determination and some suggestion that they've made to us, which is very encouraging. As the counties are aware, Clark County is required to review its shoreline management program as is required by the Shoreline Management Act. That act requires each shoreline management program be reviewed and revised, if needed, on an eight-year schedule as established by the legislature. So this review ensures that our shoreline management program stays current with changes in law and new rules that may have come out, as well as to remain consistent with county plans and development regulations. We started this project in fall of 2019. The council may not recall, but we did have a work session with council on August 14, 2019, where we provided you what we were required to do, including the public participation program that the council approved. I will report that we had a planning commission hearing August of this year, August 20, and they unanimously made a recommendation for approval. So with that, I will turn it over to Jenna, who's going to walk you through the changes and the recommendations that will come up before you at your public hearing to consider the recommendation of the planning commission. You know, this is not too technical, but there's a lot of exhibits. So bear with us. With that, I will turn it over to Jenna. And we are, both I, Brent, and Chris Cook are here to answer questions that the councilors may have. So thank you, Jenna. Take it away.
Thanks, Oliver. Rebecca, would it be possible to open the presentation slide? So good morning. For the record, my name is Jenna Kay, and as Oliver mentioned, I work with him in community planning and am the project manager for this project. And this is CPZ number 2019-00030. All right, next slide. So for today's work session, we wanted to provide a brief background on the project, summarize public comments received so far, outline what is in the proposal, and review the planning commission's recommendation, as well as the Department of Ecology's initial determination and next step. Next slide. So Oliver just mentioned, we last spoke with you in the fall of 2019 in person, and so we wanted to just do a quick refresher about the Shoreline Management Act and this project. So the Shoreline Management Act is a land use law that was passed by the legislature in 1971 and then adopted by voters in 1972. And it's designed to protect shoreline resources, and it provides an overarching framework of goals and policies which emphasize water-dependent uses, environmental protection, and public access. And this law is developed, or this law is implemented by shoreline master programs, which are what we develop and adopt locally, and they are also approved and adopted by the State Department of Ecology. So the county adopted its first shoreline master program in the early 1970s and then completed a comprehensive update to it in 2012. And policies of the program live in the Comprehensive Plan in Chapter 13. Regulations for the program live in Chapter 40.460 of Clark County Code, and then there is also a shoreline map, which you can see an image of on the screen. And the county program only applies to shorelines in the unincorporated area in the county, and it includes water bodies and their associated shorelands, or lakes and rivers that meet certain size or flow thresholds. And the shoreline area includes the water bodies themselves plus land that extends 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark, the extent of the 100-year flood plain, and any associated wetlands. So if you take those three items and draw an outline of what extends furthest from the edge of the water, that's how you get the boundary of where shoreline jurisdiction falls. So under county jurisdiction, it's about 300 miles of shoreline, and it covers about 25,000 acres that fall under this program. And you may note on the map that the different sections of shoreline have different colors on them. These correspond with different shoreline designations. And each of those designations then corresponds with a list of uses that are allowed in each shoreline category. Next slide. So as Oliver mentioned, we are doing this periodic review because it is mandated in RCW 90.58.0804. And this is a review that we are supposed to do every eight years, and we need to review our program and revise it if necessary to keep it current with changes in laws and rules, consistent with other plans and regulations, and responsive to change circumstances, new information, and improved data. The Department of Ecology provided us with a checklist that summarizes changes in state laws and rules and so forth. And so we use that in our review process to document that we looked at all of those items and we've noted, you know, if any changes were needed in order to bring the program into compliance. And I think one other thing to note is, we've mentioned that the county did, they did a comprehensive update to this program in 2012, and that was a multi-year effort, required a lot of data gathering and analysis as part of that process. And this periodic review is a bit different in that it didn't require all of that comprehensive data compilation and analysis work as part of this process. And so it's smaller in scope and more focused on keeping the program current. Next slide. So looking at the timeline for this project, it's been a while. So we started it last summer in 2019. In the fall of 2019, we collected informal feedback through a variety of community outreach events and developed an initial draft proposal. And then based on that preliminary feedback, we developed a second draft, which was sent out in early 2020 for a 30-day public comment period. And based on that feedback, a third version of the proposal was developed, which is what was brought to the planning commission for their review. And so they had their hearing in August of this year, and that has been looked at by Ecology, and they've shared their initial determination. And now we're at the stage for the council review and decision-making. Next slide. So given the duration of this project and specific requirements we have for Ecology, there are a lot of materials. This slide is showing roughly what your hearing packet is going to look like. And for today's work session, we shared four key documents. Those are the items pointed out on this slide. So we shared a copy of the proposed amendments, a summary table that provides some additional context for each amendment, comments received so far in the project, as well as a comment summary table that includes some staff notes in it as well. And these are, if you haven't looked at them already, will be important to focus on for the hearing. There'll also be a report from the planning commission with their recommendation, as well as our CIPA documents. But most of the rest of these items are really support documentation. They're either providing a lot of detail on some specific amendments or are documenting our process, you know, open house documents, things like that. So we know it's a lot. We will make sure we get you all the hearing materials well in advance of the hearings, and we'll labor things as clearly as we can to help you in your review. Next slide. Okay. So since we started the project until now, we've received written comments from, I think it's roughly 35 individuals and groups at this point. And those are in Exhibit C of today's work session materials. And this slide is showing some key topics that came up in those comments. And you can see there's a long list of items. Many of them are related to environmental concerns that people have, such as an interest in having the shoreline program better address climate change or better understanding of how well the mitigation is working for shoreline projects, things like that. You know, there was feedback on specific water bodies that people had of interest, and, you know, also some questions about the Shoreline Management Act itself or what's in our shoreline master program. So, you know, this slide is not doing justice to the depth of what's in those comments. So I think reading through them, you get a good sense of sort of what different people in the community are caring about. And we'll keep adding to the package of comments as we receive more going into the hearing. And I'll talk more about these on the next slide. So next slide. Okay. So a comment summary document that we made, that's something we have to do for the Department of Ecology, so also wanted to share that with you. It includes a summary of the comments we received during the 30-day comment period, as well as the testimony for the planning commission hearing. And so not only do we need to sort of note the key points that came up in comments, we also have to provide a staff response. And in that document, we tried to be as clear as we could on our approach to decide whether or not to address the comments we received. And we basically used four categories to sort through the feedback that we heard. So, you know, one category is, you know, items that were more questions than comments and didn't really run themselves to feedback, and so those items, you know, don't show up in the proposal. Second category was feedback that if we were to address what the person was requesting, it would require a change in state law. So again, those are items that aren't in the proposal. The third category of items are those that would improve our program's compliance with the state law and its associated guidelines, and/or would improve clarity on areas that are confusing in the code language. So category three, those are the items that we got feedback on and we were able to address with additional revisions in the proposal. And then the fourth category of comments are policy items that really are up to you as a council to let us know if there are things you want us to address or not. These are not, these are items that we don't have to address to be in compliance as part of this periodic review, you know, but of course are things we could address if you all want us to. Logistically, based on how this year has been going with COVID, our suggestion is that if there are any items in the comments that we have not addressed that you would like us to, that are these like policy-type items, our suggestion would be to add them as a future shoreline project and can be added to our work program in 2021, for instance, as opposed to putting them in with the periodic review right now. And one of the questions we'll ask at the end of the presentation is, of the comments you've received so far, if there is anything that you know you would like us to address in the future? And if you don't know, that's also totally okay. We have, Community Planning has a work session with you in mid-November to discuss our 2021 work program, so that would be a good time to let us know if there is anything that you do want us to address further. Next slide. Okay. So moving on to what is in the actual proposal. So there are amendments in the Comprehensive Plan and three different chapters of Clark County Code, as well as there are amendments to the shoreline map. My plan is to briefly touch on all the items, and any of them that you want me to go into more detail, please just let me know. And then I also just want to mention that Exhibit B in today's materials does provide some background information for most of the amendments. So if you haven't looked at that, I would encourage looking at that before the hearing to get that additional background information. Next slide. Okay. So first, we'll talk about amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. All of the amendments to the Comp Plan, I would consider housekeeping in nature. There are no proposed policy changes to the program. There's, you know, an edit in the introduction of the whole plan and some additional edits in the background section of the shoreline chapter. You know, we need to add this update to a list of updates to the Comprehensive Plan and one of the appendices. And then I think the most significant change to the Comp Plan is we are proposing to add the shoreline map to the appendix in the Comp Plan that houses most of our other land use maps, because otherwise this map is just a standalone map that can be hard to track down. So that's what's in the proposal regarding Comp Plan changes. Next slide. And then moving on to amendments in Clark County Code. Before I talk through these, I do want to talk a little bit about critical areas. As you all know, you know, these include wetlands, habitat conservation areas, flood hazard areas, critical aquifer recharge areas, and geologically hazardous areas. And generally, our critical areas are regulated through the county's critical areas ordinances for each of these items. However, in, based on the Shoreline Management Act and Growth Management Act, the shoreline management areas, for shoreline management areas, critical areas are regulated through the shoreline master program regulations and not our critical areas ordinances. And the county code is written in such a way so that our shoreline program holds in our critical areas ordinances by reference. So for the most part, the regulations are the same inside and outside of shorelines. But I raised this because we needed to make some decisions on where to make some of the, like where to put some of the amendments. Do we put them in the critical areas ordinance and then pull it in by reference? Or do we put the amendment directly in the shoreline code so it only impacts the shoreline area? And so the approach that we took was that, you know, this project, the intention wasn't to update our critical areas ordinances extensively. And so if there were minor changes that were corrections or clarification edits, we had placed them in the critical areas ordinance and we'll pull it in by reference. But for everything else, we have just made those changes in the shoreline code. And that's the general approach that we've used. So to talk about the actual amendments. So in Chapter 40.440, which is the Habitat Conservation Chapter, there is a text amendment that improves the clarity on defining priority habitat and species areas, and also an update to the best available science documents that are listed there. This item was in response to feedback from constituents who had some questions and pointed out that it wasn't written very clearly and that our list of documents was out of date. When you review the planning commission hearing testimony, there was some additional feedback on this section on our amendment. So that is something you might want to review. In Chapter 40.450, so this is the county's wetland ordinance, there are a couple of minor revisions in there. For instance, there is a text revision to clarify wetland delineation information requirements. There are edits for consistency with current wetland guidance on data used to establish wetland buffer width. And there are text edits to correct a habitat function rating score that's required to meet habitat corridor standards, and the addition of a code reference to the list of activities not allowed in the buffer. And then I think the last edit in that section is that there are, there's an edit that adds mitigation credit reduction when required buffers are not or cannot be provided. And so for those amendments, we haven't heard any concerns from any constituents yet on those. So next, I'll move to Chapter 40.460.
Jenna, one, could I ask, have the wetland buffers changed in this rendition?
The changes, I think the changes I talked about so far are, I would say, minimal to no impact. There are some additional changes I'm going to talk about related to wetlands that are slightly more significant, but I haven't gotten to them yet. So I will point, I will point those out when we get there. Okay. Okay. So next, going to move to Chapter 40.460. So this is the chapter that is shoreline master program regulations. And there's a few places in the code where we, where we've clarified where you can find a copy of the shoreline map to make it more clear that you will be able to find it in the Comprehensive Plan. There is an amendment that has clarified the procedures for granting relief from a shoreline restoration project within an urban growth area that results in a shift in the ordinary high watermark. And this is an item, we had it in the code, but in reviewing it, it seemed like you could just be a bit more clear if someone wanted to follow this relief process. And there is also an amendment that would update the cost threshold for freshwater docks to determine at what dollar amount a freshwater dock requires a shoreline substantial development permit versus being exempt from requiring one. And this is to reflect the updated dollar amounts calculated by the Office of Financial Management. Next slide. So the proposal includes an amendment to update the Critical Areas Code section to fill in missing ordinances and the date of the most recent ordinance for each critical area. So that change brings our shoreline code into alignment with our critical areas ordinances, because we do need to actually add the ordinance number to pull in that code. And I already mentioned, there was an amendment to the Habitat Conservation Chapter clarifying priority habitat and species areas and how that's defined, as well as a list of best available science documents. And there's a very similar amendment in the shoreline chapter that makes it consistent with that, the habitat chapter. And then there are a bunch of amendments that are related to wetlands that are, wetlands just in the shoreline area. And so these are items that we have to address as part of this periodic review because there hasn't updated wetland guidance. And one of the items on our checklist provided by Ecology is to make sure our shoreline program is in alignment with current wetland guidance. And we've run into a bit of a sequencing challenge because our wetland ordinance, we haven't fully updated it to align with the updated guidance yet. It's something we have to do before we, the next Comp Plan. It's something that's going to be worked on, I think, starting next year. So where our preference would be to, you know, update your wetland ordinance and then just pull it into the shoreline program, but because we have to have our shoreline program updated now, we, there are some items we've had to address that we haven't addressed fully outside of shoreline areas. And so these are the items that, you know, we felt like were, if you were to apply it countywide, they would need more conversation, and that's why we've just put them in the shoreline area, where there's a lot less activity going on and will have a lot less impact. And Brent is on the line and can answer some questions too about any of these items in terms of what he sees on the ground. So I'm just going to walk through these kinds of, the changes to wetlands within shoreline areas. Okay. So there is, there are a few amendments that relate to wetland buffer width standards and the reduction of wetland buffer width when you're in shoreline area. So for instance, there is an amendment that clarifies that the maximum width reduction for a wetland buffer when you're in shoreline area is 25%. So you can, you know, there's a list of things that you can do to reduce your buffer width. And there is essentially a cap being put on that at 25% reduction, as like the maximum reduction at any point along that buffer. And, you know, this ties to one of the principles of the Shoreline Management Act is no net loss. And that has to do with, you can't lose ecological function. And so one of the reasons for this is that to ensure no net loss, there's amendments to how much you can reduce a buffer in shoreline areas. Another item has to do with the placement of wetlands and wetland buffers in a non-buildable tract. This is something that's in our wetland ordinance, and essentially, you know, when you're in an urban, when you're in an urban plot or subdivision, you need to place your wetlands and wetland buffers in a non-buildable tract, except for a few different circumstances when that doesn't seem feasible. But based on the Shoreline Management Act, that approach doesn't really work in the shoreline program, and instead, we need to just follow, you know, an avoidance and minimization sequence for avoiding and minimizing impacts. So this is one item that when we shared this with Veeb, this is one of the items that they had questions about on, you know, why this doesn't apply in the shoreline area. It's, you know, based on the guidance we've been getting from Ecology, we felt like it had to be included in order to bring the program into compliance. And I think Frank, again, can also speak to this. We don't think this will have too much of an impact because the section of code is very rarely used. So, but I did want to flag that Veeb did raise some concerns about that. Okay. Another change regarding wetland buffers in shoreline areas is regarding low-impact development. So in our current wetlands ordinance, the low-impact development is one of several things that you can do that can contribute to a reduced buffer width. However, under current shoreline and wetland guidance, we are not allowed to reduce a buffer that's there for habitat reasons because we are improving water quality. So it's one of those things where the low-impact development doesn't actually contribute to reducing your buffer in certain circumstances. And this was another item that some Veeb members were concerned about. And one thing we were able to do was move the location of this amendment and how we put it in the proposal, but that was another item that there was some concern about. Okay. All right. So there's an amendment that's clarifying that the avoidance, minimization, and mitigation sequence that the avoidance, minimization, and mitigation sequence applies to wetland buffers and not just wetlands. And then there's another batch of revisions that relate to wetland buffer standards. You can, you can kind of tell that the guidance has been updated around wetland buffers, which is driving a lot of these changes. So we have an edit, we had the wrong habitat score in one place. We had to change that, you know, wetland with low habitat function has a rating of a six, not a five. And then we also clarified that stormwater facilities need to be located in the outer 25% of the buffer with some additional criteria when they're located in a buffer. And our wetland ordinance just says they need to be located in the outer edge of a buffer. So this 25% is adding, you know, more specificity than our current wetland code says. And this was the third and final item that some Veeb members had some concern about. And again, based on current guidance, we felt had to be part of the proposal despite their concerns. And I, the, the final amendments related to wetlands and shoreline have to do with clarifying the approach that can be used when reading wetlands that have different classes within them, as well as clarifying the applicability of a mitigation in move fee program. Next slide. Okay, so moving to other sections of the shoreline code outside of critical areas. There is an amendment that would add a statement to the aquaculture uses section that references a 2018 law that prohibits marine and pen aquaculture activities for non-native finfish species unless they already had a lease from a certain date. In the recreational uses section, there is an amendment that would allow a public boat ramp to be located in a floodway. And in the residential uses section regarding floating homes and on-water residences, there are a couple of edits to clarify things in that section. In the past couple of years, there have been state laws passed that prohibit new floating homes and on-water residences in the state. And we had addressed those in a previous, in previous amendments to the shoreline code. But in reviewing it, you know, we've had questions like, well, if you have one that's legal, can you move it? If you, you know, and where can you move it to? Things like that. So there are some amendments that just address some of those specifics. So it's more clear, you know, that if you, if you have a floating home that is legal, that you're allowed to move it to another legal place where you're allowed to park it, things like that. And the proposal includes an amendment to improve flexibility in the Shoreline Management Review Committee membership. This is an internal county committee that reviews all projects requiring a shoreline substantial development permit, conditional use permit, or variance. And the proposal also includes an amendment for shoreline projects that have a concurrent type three land use action so that the Shoreline Management Review Committee can cede their authority to the hearings examiner to help streamline the county processes because those projects have to go to the hearings examiner anyway. And then the last amendment in the, to the code has to do with clarifying our permit filing procedures when we submit permit documents to the Department of Ecology. Next slide. Okay, so the last batch of amendments I'm going to walk us through are those that would update the shoreline map. The first one is, we have updated the water feature layer that's used on the map to reflect current water body areas and labels. And that just applies across the map, but doesn't really impact the area of, of where shoreline is. And then the rest of these I'm gonna walk through one at a time with images. So next slide. Okay, so the proposal includes adding Cardi Lake to the shoreline map. And so Cardi Lake falls under the Shoreline Master Program, but was accidentally left out in the 2012 update. And so this amendment would add it onto the map. So the image on the left is showing the current map. And then the image on the right outlines the area that would change. It's a little hard to see because the lake has a blue aquatic designation. So we are adding a blue layer on top of a blue lake. But that will be officially adding it to the map. And if you're not familiar, Cardi Lake is mostly located just outside the city of Ridgefield. And so the county will be adding the portion in county jurisdiction. And then the city is responsible for adding the, the bottom portion of the lake in their, update to their shoreline program. Next slide. The proposal also includes amendments to update the map to incorporate the, the latest FEMA insurance rate maps for the southeastern portion of the county. These updated flood maps went into effect in January of 2018, and they delineate the hundred-year flood plain. Okay, so this one's also hard to see. On the left is the current map, on the right, there are outlines around what's changing. So the river Waschugel River is the river that kind of cuts across the top of the slide and then down towards Waschugel. And there's some, it looks like black dots along the river. That's small areas where the flood plain has extended further out. And the biggest area of change is in the very bottom right corner near where Stigerwell Refuge is. You can see the black outline around a purple area that is also being added onto the map because of the flood map change. Next slide. The proposal also includes an amendment to fix inconsistencies between the hundred-year flood plain and the boundary of shoreline jurisdiction along Lac in the Lake. So on the left is the current map. And on the right, you can see the proposed changes outlined in black along the northern side of the lake. Next slide. So the proposal also includes an amendment to remove a section of wetlands from the shoreline map near Shanghai Creek. So this is, you know, if you think of where Orchards is, this is east of where Orchards is. And so on the left, you can see the current map. On the right, you can see the outlined area that would be removed from, from the map. And there is, in your hearing materials, there will be an exhibit that has a lot of background information on this item. But basically, this area of wetlands does not technically meet the definition of being in shoreline jurisdiction. And this was discovered through project-related site investigations where, you know, staff were onsite and learned that the area is not associated with a shoreline in the state. So this would improve the accuracy of the shoreline map. Next slide. And the proposal also includes amendments to update the shoreline map near the confluence of the Lewis and Columbia Rivers to integrate new data collected on properties in this area. So all of the areas that I'm gonna point out here, they're all owned by the same property owner who is working on establishing a wetland mitigation bank. Also, they're working on that process through the state. And as part of that, they've done a lot of onsite mapping. And they noticed some discrepancies between the shoreline map and the data they were collecting. So they've shared that, and it's been reviewed by our county staff as well as ecology staff. And so the, the changes are in a few different areas. And I'm, well, I would say several different areas. Some of them are very small in size, some are much larger. So I'm gonna just focus on the three largest areas of change. So you can see there is a, a large purple blob. And on the, sort of bottom right portion of there is Lancaster Lake. And in the current map, it's surrounded by this purple rural resource area. And if you look at the new proposed map, it looks like the blue area above Lancaster Lake extends further north. So basically, this is a situation where we have land that's mapped as being upland, but the data is actually showing it's below the ordinary high watermark. So it would change designations from a rural resource designation to an aquatic designation. And if you look a little bit further north of that lake, toward the Lewis River, and the Lewis River is what's the river cutting across the screen, you'll see on the current map, it's just purple. But in the proposed map, the color is no longer there. And this is an area that essentially falls out of shoreline jurisdiction when you look at the additional data. And then finally, if you sort of follow the Lewis River to the west right before it reaches the Columbia, which is like the, right on the edge of the image here, in the current map, there is a very light blue section, which is the aquatic designation. And in the proposed map, it becomes purple. So this is another instance of changing designation based on where the ordinary high watermark is. There is, there are going to be several exhibits in your hearing materials that show all the documentation that was provided regarding these changes. And you are welcome to look at them when you get those materials. Next slide. And then finally, the proposed new shoreline map will reflect current city boundaries. So since the shoreline map was left updated in 2012, the cities of Camas and La Center have annexed land that does include shoreline areas. So, you know, upon annexation, those shoreline areas, you know, shift from county jurisdiction to city jurisdiction. And on the left map, Camas is shaded in gray. And there are a few areas highlighted in pink at the edges of the city. And those are the areas that have changed jurisdiction. And then the map on the right, La Center is shaded in gray. And there's one area on the East Fork Lewis River that has transferred into La Center's jurisdiction. This is an item, we, we hadn't called it out with the Planning Commission at their hearing, even though we were using updated city boundaries. But it is something ecology has asked us to document to, to show this, this change in whose jurisdiction these sections of shoreline belong to. Next slide. Okay, so the Planning Commission did vote to approve the proposal. You will see a report with the recommendation in it as part of your hearing packet. And it outlines their findings and their evaluation of the four criteria that are on this screen. And these are the criteria, they come out of one of the shoreline racks that basically says, like, these are the criteria that you need to meet for ecology to approve any changes to your program. So they seem like the right criteria for us to use to evaluate this proposal. So in, in addition to supporting the proposal, some planning commission members did also ask, in response to reviewing comments from the public, they did ask that staff also work on improving shoreline monitoring, reporting, and transparency. Next slide. So I've mentioned that the Department of Ecology has also looked at the current proposal. They did find that it is consistent with the Shoreline Management Act and applicable guidelines. They did give us a few suggestions. They pointed out that we needed to update the ordinance number in two different places to make sure we had the current one listed there. And then they also asked us to document that area's annex that I just spoke about. Next slide. Okay, so we are scheduled to bring this proposal to you for a hearing on December 1st. We will have a draft ordinance ready if you are ready to adopt that day. But of course, can come back later if you choose to change anything. And then once you all make your decision, the, the ordinance will go to the Department of Ecology for their final review and approval process. So in closing, Oliver, Brent, and I are here to answer any questions you've had from what you've heard us say today or what you've reviewed so far. And then we are also interested to hear if, if you have any comments based on the, based on your review of the comments that have been received so far. You know, if there is anything you know you would like us to work on in the future, we are glad to hear that now as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Are there questions of the council?
I'm sure, I just.
Yeah, Councilor Olson.
I just have one quick question. I think back on like slide 11-ish, you just made a, a comment or a statement that one significant change to this, or, yeah, change to, to this particular action would be to add the map to the comp plan. So it's not there now, I assume, obviously. And then, and I guess my question is, why is that a big change? And what real impact potentially does that, does that have by adding the map to the comp plan where it doesn't exist today?
Yeah, and that may not have been the best choice of words. I don't think it's actually that significant. But it is maybe the most significant change we're making in the comp plan. But, but I, but the, yeah, the, the map right now, that you basically have to track down, you can pull up a copy of Maps Online, but otherwise, you'd have to track down the ordinance from the last time it was updated to find a copy of the actual map. And so by putting it in the comp plan, it, it seems like it makes it easier to find if someone is looking for a copy of the map. And that's where our other land use maps live. But I think I misprecised saying that it actually was significant. I don't actually think it has much, you know, besides making it easier to find, much other impact.
Okay, because I was just thinking in terms of the comp plan itself, you know, that land use map is the plan, right? And so I just wanted to, I just wanted to clear, clarify that just based on your earlier description of that. So if, if the purpose is just to make the information, information more readily available and clearer to those who are interested, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, yes, Councilor, this is Oliver. That is true, there is significant impact on that. As you know, the shoreline is now the 14th goal of the Growth Management Act. It is going to be, the map will be one of the figures that is associated with the, with the chapter. That's why we want to make sure that it is in there and is much easier to find rather than someone going to the ordinance or looking on map online. It's just look on our comp plan, it's figure X or Y, it'll be much easier to find.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I hear a cricket.
I'm sorry, I was moving my.
Counselor, may I?
Unmute button. So as far as the state requirements for buffers on wetlands, obviously, that causes a lot of our constituents out in the rural areas some heartache when, one, it's designated a wetland contrary to what their own consultant may have found. And, and then adding buffers of different widths depending on what, what category it falls into. Does our, the proposed code changes add to those buffers or change those buffers?
And Brent, feel free to chime in after I give my preliminary response. I don't think, none of the changes are making buffers wider. I think what most of the changes are getting at are removing some exceptions or that maybe you don't always have to apply, or they're limiting how much you can reduce the buffer. So some of, so outside of shoreline. So some of, so outside of shoreline area right now, you know, there's a whole list of things you can do that might impact the width of your buffer. And so there's a little bit more limitation on those items or how much the buffer can shrink. And Brent, do you want to add on to that?
Yeah, I just, Jenna's correct, the, these changes don't change the buffer width standards. They don't change how you determine what the buffer width should be. They're just, they're changes to the flexibility that you have with achieving reductions without having to do additional mitigation to the wetland itself. So there, there's still options if you can't meet, can't meet the revised reduction standards in the shoreline area, you still have options to mitigate for the wetland itself to achieve some additional reduction. In addition to that, a, a lot of our shoreline reviews, particularly in the rural area, are related to single-family homes. And if you really can't meet the standards, there is the variance process that will allow you to, to build your home on the property if it's so highly constrained that you, you can't meet those buffer reduction standards.
Any other questions? Okay, I don't hear any, so I appreciate this work session. We'll look more thoroughly at information that you have for us from pretending to comments, et cetera, and be sure to let you know if we, if we have certain areas that we'd like you to delve into a little bit further because of comments.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, all right. I guess we're adjourned, we have three minutes before our next work session. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Oliver. I want to thank the council and again Jenna and Brent and ecology for all the assistance they provided us in completing this project. Councilor McBiggie, I know there was some conversation we had with you on Lacamas Lake. That is something that I'm sure the council is aware that it involves a lot of players, and the county will do our best to address that. So that is outside this particular project. So thank you for that opportunity. Thank you, councilors.
Thank you, Oliver.
And council, just a reminder, the next work session and council time is on a different WebEx, so you'll need to log off of this, give the staff a couple of minutes so that they can get it up and running for you.
Thank you.